I want to call the meeting to order. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
And so, the first item on the agenda is going to be our, well, the, and I believe it's on our regular meeting agenda as well. We'll have to amend this agenda. Uh, because, is Tiffany on our regular meeting? So, we need to remove item D from the agenda. Because we won't have that. Well, it's on this agenda, item D, on this agenda, and it says, "The consideration of agreement with Tiffany Green for social media services." We need to remove that from the agenda. So, we'll have to, oh darn, I just got caught by the train. So, we'll have to do that when we go into our regular session. Someone just will make a motion to amend the agenda, removing item D. Okey dokey.
Okay.
Ms. Betsy, will you do that for us? Will you make that motion during the regular meeting?
If I can remember.
If not, I'll remind. All right, so, um, if everyone has reviewed the minutes, do you have any comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah.
Okey dokey. So, the first item, B, is going to be the amendment to our personnel policy. And it's just adding our vacation, not vacation, it's adding a holiday, which is Juneteenth. On the calendar as well as, I just lost my agenda.
Christmas Eve.
As well as Christmas Eve. And the reason we added Christmas Eve is because generally, we give that off anyway. And it doesn't make me look any better. By, by say, "Oh, the mayor is giving everybody off on Christmas Eve," then let's just go ahead and put it in there to say, "Christmas Eve is, they're given holiday." If another mayor should come up and decide, "No, we're not going to give them Christmas Eve," then that's their prerogative. But for right now, we're going to amend the personnel policy to add Christmas Eve in there, as well as Juneteenth. That gives them a total of, is it 11 or 12 holidays for the year?
11.
11 holidays for the year. Now, generally, one, another one will squeeze in there, and that's around Thanksgiving. Maybe it'll squeeze in there. It all depends on the day and all that other stuff, okay? Everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
What's the secret new?
What's that? I'm sorry?
What's the secret new holiday?
Oh, no, it's not a secret. It's, you know, sometimes it's Thanksgiving. Sometimes Thanksgiving, according to what's happening, who's in, and all of that. If we just say Thanksgiving Eve.
Oh.
Oh.
Sometimes it's leave early, sometimes it's, you know, so, that's not. Chief, are you in here?
Yes.
I see you, Chief Gibson.
Okay. Um.
He's muted. There, now he's not.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I hear you. Okay. Um, the next item is the contract, the chief's contract. We had to amend the contract because the chief does not need the statement, he doesn't want to participate in the Maryland State Retirement Program. And in order to do that, we have to, he has to have a contract with an end date. So, it has to be like a year or two-year contract. So, that's why we had to amend it. In order for him to be able to opt out of the retirement, the state retirement plan.
To request to opt out, they have to prove it based on a questionnaire that I have to, I filled out and will submit with it. And so, I think Sue Ellen put in there for me a three-year period.
Is there language in there that makes it easy to renew without having to go through a whole, full rewrite process? I mean, is it, is there a way to make the lang, maybe it's too late if Sue Ellen's already reviewed it, but just a way to make the renewing streamlined, or?
It is. It is pretty, yeah, generally smooth. Initially, years ago, it wasn't, but it is now. It's smooth. Meaning, when it's time to renew the contract?
Yeah.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay.
The same, just like Mr. Barnes. It just, it renews unless there's something different that he wants to ask for, or we want to ask for, then we add, delete, and move on. Good. And so, next item, as we move forward. Oh, it's the bus transportation with Comer Manor. I'm not just Comer Manor, the Port Towns bus. We have a committee member who is, is it you, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. Barnes, you can go ahead and report out on that.
If you remember, at the Port Towns, last Port Towns quarterly meeting, Cottage City brought up that they weren't happy with the Port Towns Bus Transportation Service. Edmiston is a member of it. We don't pay unless, none of the towns pay unless they use the, have members of the community that you ride the bus. And so, we, we don't have anyone that uses the bus, so we, the only time we've used the bus is for our summer camps, when we've transported the children on field trips. So, and we, of course, paid when that occurred. Well, Cottage City wasn't happy with the cost with the last quarter, the COVID situation dropped everything down. So, they appointed a subcommittee of representatives from each of the communities. Bladensburg was Councilmember Blount. The Comer Manor was Mayor Barrow and their finance director, city clerk Dan Biden. And Cottage City was Consuelo, the town administrator, and commission chair, Wanda Wheatley. And Wanda did, was not able to attend the meeting, and Consuelo had to leave early. But four or five things came out of the meeting, recommendations to bring back to you folks to discuss. One, the buses are old, and one of them needs to be replaced. So, they believe that the recovery funds can be used for that purpose. And so, they believe that each community could pitch in $20,000, and that would replace the bus. The second, they believe it would be fair for every community to have, there to be an overhead charge that is made to every community, regardless whether you have riders or not. And so, Mayor Barrow was going to go back and create what that potential cost might be. Third, they wanted to change regulations on how you ride the bus during the week, how often. You can't go to Walmart, same person can't go to Walmart every day using the bus. They, they wanted it to be regulated, and apparently, it wasn't getting particularly regulated. Bladensburg has the highest use because of the Emerson House and some of the other senior locations. And I believe Comer Manor then is next, and Cottage City had very few riders, and then we didn't have any. And I think that was the, um, I, action items that came out of that subcommittee. We were to go back to our full councils and discuss those thoughts.
Yes. And Edmiston, we haven't participated because we have none, none of our residents really participate in it. The only time we use it, or used it, was during our camp. And so, it was ridiculous for us to even, to pitch in or pay because we're not using it. So, that's part of the discussion that we need to have, whether you want to, you think it's feasible to go in to purchase a new bus that we know our residents do not use. I understand Commissioner Wheatley was feeling that we were getting over because we weren't paying or being charged. But again, it makes no sense for us to pay for a service that's not provided, or it's not beneficial to us.
$40,000 is too much.
Yeah.
That'd be a lot of Uber rides.
Yeah. And Bladensburg gets the most use out of it. Cottage City did use it, as well as Comer Manor, they pretty much used it. But Bladensburg, especially because they have a large senior population because of the senior housing they have there, they really utilized it. And I'm not sure why they don't purchase their own bus, because as much as they were being billed, Mr. Barnes, do you have some of those numbers?
I was trying to pull.
Oh, I'm sorry, I asked the question too quickly.
I was trying to get it. The, the cost in 2020, of course, 2020 was a bizarre year because of the darn COVID experience. And so, they, they had issues with that. But for instance, the per-ride cost for 2020 came out to be $36.09 for each of the communities, of course, zero for us in the, in the, that was in the quarter from January 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2020. It was when they had higher ridership, the total cost for the quarter that was April 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2020, it was $17,770 in expenses, and the quarter before that, it was $20,000 in expenses. I don't guess she gave, oh, yes. So, like, Bladensburg had 645 people ride the bus. Comer Manor had 252, Cottage City had 121. Well, then the COVID hit in March of 20, well, I guess it was really bad all of January, February, and March of 2020. And so, they had 203 riders from Bladensburg, 76 riders from Comer Manor, and 31 from Cottage City. So, their usage dropped greatly, and because the usage dropped greatly, the way they calculate the bill, the per- rider cost skyrocketed. So, that's why it became, Cottage City got excited about that particular feature, too, that, you know, that was, they could have paid, like Councilmember McCauley said, they could have bought a lot of Uber rides for $36.09 for 31 people, for 31 people to ride the bus for the quarter. So, so, so that's kind of what was the, was the discussion. But Mayor Barrow indicated she thought that you had to look at the year before, not the COVID years, and that, and then that the really big issue was the maintenance on the bus, and that they were broke down a lot because of the age. And there was no grant dollars, the grant dollars that fund the purchase of the bus originally that the county gave, is now being diverted to the county to replace and replenish their buses as they need to through maintenance. So, that's kind of what came out of that discussion, too. I can send this spreadsheet out, and you can actually see.
Have 15-passenger bus?
Yes. They, Bladensburg used to. I don't know if it still runs, but they did have that bus.
They did have a bus, but obviously, something is going on with it because they don't use it.
Yeah, I don't know what the, yeah, they don't use it. So, um, let's see, what else? Oh, they wanted to, the, I wanted, I forgot to say, they wanted to modify the MOU to create those rider restrictions so you couldn't drop, couldn't use the bus to go to Walmart multiple times. And they also, as I said, Mayor Barrow, number three action item was that she thought you needed to not use the COVID numbers for 2020 because they were skewed because of the drop in ridership, so.
Any other comments on that?
I'm kind of curious how, not that I'm suggesting that we go along with it, but what was the explanation of how we would use the recovery funds for this bus going forward?
They believe that it's a loss of revenue that they experienced from the, you know, epidemic. And so, they can tie that loss of revenue back to the, to somehow with the bus. I don't know, Councilmember Chester, I am not seeing enough of the regulations yet. And the league's going to be providing a very detailed webinar on that in the very near future. I'll know more, but I didn't feel comfortable necessarily thinking that that was the right interpretation.
And this mainly coming from Comer Manor, right?
The, I'm sorry, Councilman Johnson?
It, I said, "This is mainly coming from Comer Manor."
Yes, uh-huh, correct.
They're the ones who are really pushing it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I kind of figured it.
Not, not exactly so, yes, for one point, but in our meeting, Cottage City is the one that really voiced their irritation. Initially, which is why we decided to have a, a committee look at it.
Comer Manor is pushing the new bus.
Yes, yeah, Comer Manor is pushing the new bus, yes.
I'm sending you all the notes and the spreadsheet, so you, you will have additional information.
So, any other comments on that? What are your thoughts? Do you, you agree with not going forward or getting into a bus contract, or?
I don't, I don't see a reason to go forward with it if we're not using it for our town residents. That's $20,000 that can be used for our residents.
Yes, and that was, the, they definitely do need another bus, but even if, if they don't get another bus, do you think that we should participate and pay?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Hillary?
Not necessarily, because it doesn't sound like any of our residents are using it. And it sounds like it works better for congregate kind of living situations, you know, whether there's, like you mentioned, senior apartments or some other kind of, you know, community group that would be using it regularly, and we just don't really have that here. And I'm curious, I don't know, years down the line, but when the Purple Line is running, what kind of public transit feeding into that station? I wouldn't want to be locked into something if that's going to be improved.
Well, and certainly, Councilmember Chester, the metro buses on Kennelworth will go right to the Purple Line Station. So, you can go, walk up to Sunoco, get on the bus, and go right down the street to, to the Purple Line. But the other thing, they could not understand why our residents do not use the bus. And you know, I told them, "It's pretty simple. Most of our seniors here either have family or they have a spouse that drives them to their medical appointments or to the grocery store, and they don't, there's not, the difficulty of getting the bus to go and drop me, drop you off at Walmart and then come back two hours later is not, you know, necessarily real convenient, and it may be where they go." So, it's somewhat limited about, because you can only go in a five-mile radius.
Mr. Barnes, you should tell, "We got better neighbors around here." The neighbors take, the neighbors pick up, the neighbors do the shopping.
That's what I, because Mayor Barrow could not understand why our folks would not use the bus. And so, I said, "Well, you know, I don't know a definitive answer, but my, my thought would be that there's people that take care of each other here that get them to their appointments and get them their groceries."
Well, and a lot of the grocery stores around here have car services also for shoppers. That helps.
So, I do have to take feedback back, Mayor, so I appreciate you asking the questions.
Yes, yeah. We don't need to lollygag around it. It is, you know, it's the way it is here, so. So, thank you. Thank you for your input, everyone. I think we all know where we stand on that. Go. If we could move on to the next item, which is our rec center. That is on the agenda, and the discussion was, should we go ahead and open? And I believe we all said yes. And there were some policies or some verbiage that Sue Ellen had to put in place for us as far as, you know, PPE warnings and so on and so forth. Did we, do we have that?
Yes, it went out, and she completed that. So, we haven't had any, we haven't taken any registrations, other than we've reserved it a few months out for some of the staff. But I wanted to put it back on here for your review just one more time. We, we have it all set up. There's the $100 sanitation fee, the, the floor's been completed. Reverend Carter's now taking down his, his church setup so that he can, so it can be rented. And then, the only other issue that came up in the conversation, we were posting signs, the appropriate signs. Avery has the girls working on getting those set up for us to put up in terms of the alerts. And then, the, in the agreement, it says that the music has to stop at 10 o'clock PM. And Chief Gibson and the mayor and I talked about this today. I don't think we've enforced that, so I think the music's gone beyond. The only reason that it's, can be, comes an issue, and Councilmember Johnson can talk about this, but the apartment, sometimes when the music gets really loud with the back door open, there's some complaints that develop. So, I didn't know if we needed to modify that, or Avery and I also had a question about whether we needed to restrict access to it more. Right now, if you come in and rent for Saturday, you get the key, you have access starting at 8:00 AM on Saturday. You don't give the key back till 1:00 AM Sunday morning. Well, you don't give the key back till Monday, but you, you have to be out of the building at 1:00 AM Sunday morning. So, we didn't know if we should narrow that down any, or if we should just leave it the way it is and let folks go.
Does that leave enough time for the cleaning, for the deeper cleaning that should be happening?
Cleaning folks are going to go in at 6:00 AM on Sunday morning, and then on Monday morning after the, if there's a Sunday rental, yeah.
I think 10 o'clock is definitely a time for the music to be turned off because there's a couple homes also right by the
Yes.
the community center, and I do know the one lady, you know, she's got some small kids, and she says, "Sometimes it's hard to get the kids, you know, to go to sleep because they can hear that music." So, I definitely say 10 o'clock, that's it. The music is, you know, turned off.
The only issue with that, Councilmember, is somebody has to enforce that, or otherwise, it'll just be hit and miss.
That's what we have a fine police department for.
Well, can, can we look at it realistically, though? Maybe there's something else we can work in there, but I do believe 10 o'clock, it's a bit early because we all know. You, I'm sorry?
That's, yeah, if you haven't, you know, having a good function.
Right, and I believe sometimes the party is not getting started until about 9:00 anyway. For real. So, maybe there's another type of restriction we could have, but I think shutting it down at 10, we might not get many takers, or they'll break the rules because we won't get the enforcement that we want.
We don't allow the neighbors to play their music to where it's disturbing the neighbor, you know, next door. You know, I can't play my music and disturb my neighbors next door.
Right.
So, we're renting out the center, we're disturbing apartment people, we're disturbing neighbors, you know, close by there. There's no reason they can't turn the music down to where you can hear it in the rec.
Oh, yeah, 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 turn it down, but not, um, okay, that's the difference.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe some of the restriction like that to, and I don't know, Chief, does there have to be a meter sound, or, or unless we wait until there's a report of a disturbance?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Now we can.
Um, that back door has been a contributing factor to folks complaining about
Right.
the, the level of noise. And what I would propose, I mean, if you're having a party from 9:00 to 1:00, you can't turn the music off. I don't think that the application should say, "Turn it off," but have it in a range where it cannot be heard or, you know, create a disturbance with the neighbors. So, you know, if we have an officer working, they would come and ask them to turn it down where it can't be heard from a distance of whatever we say it ought to be. Like, we walk off the distance from the, the door to, say, the closest resident, and then let that be the standard. And then we give them a warning ahead and turn it down, and that's the way, you know, we would do it. But I don't think, if somebody's having a party, you can't ask them not to play any music after, not, not when they rent it from the government, you know what I mean? So, but I just said, you know, be reasonable, and, you know, let those folks know who are renting the place, "Hey, after 10 o'clock, we can't hear the noise." I mean, you know, you can hear the music, but if it disturbs the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood, we're going to ask you to turn it down.
Can I make a suggestion for something that might be helpful, that in, like a kind of enforcement mechanism, but also will let, keep people aware? And I apologize for being late. I can explain why later. So, I know that, like, there are some, like, people who rent their house out on Airbnb and don't want people to be having parties at their house. They install these noise meters that let the people know who are staying there that like, your, if your noise level gets over a certain decibel, that they need to turn it down. But it also alerts, like, the homeowner that that's happening. And what it does is that it usually gets people to be like, "Oh, okay, we hit the mark, we gotta, we gotta turn the music down a little bit," right? Um, so maybe we could install something like that, that would help people sort of regulate themselves at 10 o'clock. And then, you know, and it at least could be sort of hooked up to, you know, whatever officer might be on duty that night so that if it goes off like a couple times or whatever, then they can go roll up and, and address it. But that it does get people just, it keeps them, like, gives them notice and gives them an opportunity to address it themselves.
Well, Mayor, didn't we once discuss about people bringing in these big sound systems in, you know, like stage sound system? Wasn't that a discussion? Because that was one of the things that made the music so loud. You know, people having a big old disco hall with big old stage, stage speakers and whatnot?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted. I believe we had a discussion about it, but I don't think we came up with a definitive answer or recommendation for that. Because, again, you, you don't know how to judge what's a big-time system and what's not. Where does it cut off, you know? Because again, you, you don't know how to judge what's a big time system and what's not. Where does it cut off, you know?
You know, the currently, the way
I'm talking about ser- serious big speakers like you use on a, on a, on a stage for a band.
Yeah, currently the agreement says
We had that a couple of times.
Yeah, currently the agreement says loud music, amplification, and our excessive noise are prohibited on all outside grounds or any area where the peace can be disturbed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's how we
I'm at the 10 o'clock in the
That's how we address the amplification and the sound systems, uh, not so much the ban, but um, we've included that sentence that said you can't, it's not allowed on the grounds and it's not, um, um, and it can't disrupt the peace.
I like that verbiage, but I also like, um, Sarah's idea. I don't know, um, how that sounds to you, Chief. If that seems sensible or doable?
Um, to Sarah's point, it would certainly allow the person who has rented the establishment to know that their noise level has exceeded what we would, um, you know, believe to be, you know, a breach of the peace.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as long as there's language that speaks to it in that contract that they signed before we released the place to them. And a certain decibel level or distance, one or the other. And, uh, it would help them police themselves as opposed to, uh, someone calling the police because they, you know, exceeded the noise level and they called and said, there's a loud party, so. It, uh, is definitely an option.
I like what Sarah described also because it seems a little bit more standardized. Like if there's a meter and you tell people, if you get to 14, it's, or whatever the number is, you know, that's too much, then that's, I think, easier for people to, to regulate than to say, like, you know, don't disturb the neighbors. I mean, you can be like, they must love my music. I'm not disturbing anybody. It just, you can, you can interpret things your own way. But if you have, like, something that's more standardized, that I think is easier for everyone to agree. Like, if they, if we tell you whatever, 14 is enough, and then you're above 14, then it's gonna send a sensor and then a couple of times, and then the police might come out. That seems a little, and it's easier for people to, to just accept and not sort of like, well, my interpretation was that we weren't disturbing anybody.
Right. Or the neighbor next door likes my music. I didn't know the other neighbor didn't.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
So perhaps we should delay opening till we can research and, um, explore the option with the meter.
It sounds like a good idea.
Oh, today's the 14th.
Well, I mean, as I said, we haven't had any reservations other than, uh, staff has reserved it into the future, um, some dates. But that's because we've been telling people that we were working on the agreements and, um, as we get calls and to please call back. So, I mean, we can open anytime.
So, uh, how? So what would we have to do? Uh, Chief, you would be doing some research on that as far as it in, I was gonna say in-house meter, in-house noise meter, I guess that's what you could call it.
Right.
Um.
You have to develop, uh, and I can work on it. You have to develop a standard.
Right.
A standard would be, um, distance and sound. You know, a lot of times, for those of you who have been to parties in the last few years, sometimes you cannot actually hear the music, but what you can hear is the bass from the speakers. Mr. Johnson, to your point about the size of, about the issue about the size of these speakers they have on stage, you can't hear the music, but you can hear this constant boom. And so if we can, you know, standardize a certain measure, whatever the decibel reading is, and then we test it, and then we add it to the, uh, uh, contract, I think we would be way ahead of the game. So I can, I can work on that.
Because I really don't wanna prolong it, um, too long.
Hey, what's it called, um, does this, uh, Mayor? Uh, the University of Maryland does it every day. You know, so I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
We just have to, you know, determine a standard for the town of Edmiston. And then we, we go from there.
So is everything else okay with everyone other than, um, the, the issue of noise? Because if we're in agreement in that much, um, we don't have to hash over too many of the, any other item. Did we talk about, um, or did Sue Ellen identify signage that we should have?
No, there's no, there's no standard signage that, um, particularly, you have to create your own based on whatever you are having as far as restrictions, because there's no restrictions anymore. And so, uh, there's only suggestions that, you know, you wash your hands, you, if you're not vaccinated, wear a mask. If you, uh, and so we're working on a few of those to, uh, to come up with. Uh, the girls are doing some research. We've used, uh, we went to the CDC, we went to the Park and Plan, and we've asked them for what guidelines they're doing and trying to come up with some signings that will help and that we can attach to the agreement, but so far we haven't, um, haven't got that.
Our plan doesn't have anything that they can share at this time that will be helpful. So as Rob was saying, we use what's out there and just create safety protocol information that's, um, helpful in the prevent, the preventing, but don't wanna say that we are, um, we're able to eliminate it because we're not holding ourselves liable. We're just passing along suggested ways to behave in that kind of setting.
Did Sue Ellen add language that referenced, you know, if, if there is local guidance or if there is guidance that we would follow that? Because I thought we did talk about that being that, you know, like, if, if conditions change and then things are tightened, kind of backed down again, we would just want that to apply.
She added this statement. Further, while the facility is clean regularly, I recognize that neither the town nor MNCPC can guarantee that I, I or my guest participants will not be exposed to or become infected with COVID-19. By signing this agreement, I acknowledge the highly contagious nature of COVID-19 and voluntarily assume the risk that I and my guest participants may be exposed to or infected by COVID-19 and that such exposure or infection may result in permanent injury, illness, permanent disability, and death. I understand and accept that the risk of becoming exposed to or infected by COVID-19 at the recreation facility may result from the actions, omissions, or negligence of myself and others, including but not limited to town employees, elected and appointed officials, volunteers, agents, and activity participants.
And we're having, uh, this agreement translated into Spanish as well.
So, um, Councilmember Chester, that's all she added.
Um, to, to Hillary's point, I, I think it might be wise for us to have an additional paragraph that says, that, that gives us an out if circumstances change and say we have to shut down the, the town hall again or shut down the rec center again. Um, does that, is anything like that in there? Or that, and to Hillary's point, that if the guidance becomes more restrictive, that we will require any, um, you know, let, less ease of the facility to follow the, the guidance and requirements that are set out by the state of Maryland and Prince George's County.
Yeah, we, we have a cancellation in it. All cancellations are, uh, prior to five business days before an event, or if it's after that, uh, you can't get a refund if you're, um, giving, giving, um, I mean, have rented it. We don't have cancellation language based on what you just described, Councilmember Turberville. But we can add that. Certainly Sue Ellen can add that.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be that big of a deal because we can refund the money to them. But I just wouldn't want people to suddenly say, like, well, we spent all of this money to prepare for this party that you canceled at the last minute.
Right.
Um, so just to give us some coverage there.
Okay. Very good. I will get that added.
And is there a occupancy, what's the occupancy limit in?
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five?
Yes.
Do we wanna think about maybe saying it needs to be lower for, like, to keep it at, like, 50 right now or something? We've got this Delta variant circulating. What do folks think about that?
Hmm, I'm, I'm okay with it, uh, staying at 75. Um, really, it would be on the person that is, to me, renting it. Um, I mean, the variant is out there. I think it's, we're gonna have all kinds of variants that are gonna be out there. Um, restricting, who imposes that? The county? I know we could probably reduce ourselves. Should we, fire marshal, right?
Yes.
Um, should we be in a state of emergency again? If we go into a state of emergency, um, Mr. Turberville, I think that would be a good idea for us to, um, reduce the number if we don't shut it down. But as for now, um, and then who's gonna count it?
I mean, it's just to sort of protect ourselves, but maybe that goes in with that language of, you know, if there's some, you know, restriction and we have to, you know, cancel or we have to restrict access, then it would be similarly, if there's some, you know, official guidance that we have to reduce capacity, just to have that same caveat that we might have to cancel, we might have to reduce capacity. You know, these things are out of our hands. I think
Right.
it could be that same capacity and just, you know, shutting it down.
Avery, I have a question for you. Are you thinking that we could also just have some signage that's inside the rec center?
Exactly.
That says, if you, if you're not vaccinated, please wear a mask.
We recommend
That's exactly what we're thinking of, uh, signage that indicated the use of a mask, use of, of washing hands, other kind of, um, protocols, um, maintaining, if you can, type of social distancing as best you can in that circumstance. And also, if you're not feeling well, don't tend to go home, you know? I mean, something that's kind of more common sense kind of information that we've had along the lines during COVID that, uh, would be helpful and to be, be helpful to folks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we, we're creating those signs, those type of signs.
Very good. So, um, again, so we talked about adding some, uh, changes into the contract, correct? Um, the noise, not the noise, um, cancellation notice and/or capacity, correct? And we're going to research as quickly as possible the noise meter, the in-house noise meter. And, uh, have some type of standard or policy on that. That way our police officers and, um, that'll also go into the contract, um, letting them know that there is a noise meter, correct? And this is, this is what you're responsible for.
Yeah, there, it, there has to be some kind of setting, you know, in the contract. It's gotta say, when the noise meter reaches 10 decibels.
Right.
Um, this, this kicks in.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we're looking at August. When I wanted to, um, reserve it. Okay. Um, okay. So any other comments on that? I think that's good. It's great feedback, great, um, input. I like it. Superb.
And y'all, I'm so sorry I was late. Right as I logged on, my home office is in our laundry room. The, we have a front-loading washer and it was running, and it, the door busted open and all of the water came gushing out like a wave into like
How was that happen?
And I just was sort of sitting there and Carmen looks at me and she's like, can you go shut the door? I was like, yeah, okay, yeah.
You're in shock and it's like
Bizarre. Anyway, I'm so sorry.
No, no problem. Thanks for sharing. So, um, the, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'd like for us to go into a closed session, um, to discuss some, uh, finances, personnel matters, but, um, we wanna go down the agenda as well uh, because we have some activities that are coming up, our fall activities. And then we have our National Night Out that is definitely coming up. And our new chief, this'll be his first in Edmiston. Of course, we know this is not his first. We know that he's a pro and it, very, um, experienced. But, um, did you wanna update us or you wanna save it for our, uh, regular meeting? You might wanna update us in case there's some questions about, you know, food and all of that, food delivery and how we're gonna do it.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, I can do that just briefly. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for the brief introduction. Um, there was a meeting last week, uh, with the National Night Out, uh, panel, where we talked about different, uh, things that we would do further National Night Out, which is, uh, Tuesday, August the 3rd, 2021, which is the first, uh, Tuesday in August. Uh, we're gonna have a caravan-style approach to National Night Out, which will be the first, that at least Edmiston has had. Um, where we're gonna have a number of vehicles. Um, the Public Works truck will have, uh, a DJ on the back and he'll be playing the latest, uh, tunes as we creep through the town. On another truck, we're gonna have water, chips, uh, hot dogs. And hot dogs will be in a big cooler to keep them warm. And we're gonna be passing those out in addition to some gift bags. So that's the kind of thing that we're doing. We have a, a map set up. So we'll know, uh, and we'll let the residents know which streets that we're gonna come, come through, first, second, third, fourth. Uh, we're gonna send postcards out, uh, to the residents, letting them know that, uh, we're having this event, the date, time, and those things. I'm sorry?
I was, yeah, I was talking.
Okay. We're going to, uh, put out flyers, especially in the larger confined communities like Fountain Park and the Town Home Development. We're gonna pass flyers out. We have these large banners that we ordered. I think they're four foot by six and a half foot, uh, wide, and we're gonna put them strategically around the town, advertising National Night Out for the town of Edmiston. Um, we're gonna have little signs that show, I think we're gonna try to put out 40 of them on the street that show direction of travel and also, you know, further advertise the fact that, uh, Tuesday, August the 3rd, is National Night Out as we celebrate, you know, our community interaction with our law enforcement, uh, partners. So that's just an overview. We created a couple of little, uh, committees, if you will. We got some nice people doing some cooking. Ms. McCauley.
I saw.
Yes, yes, yes. You know, and, uh, Ms. Nelson and Ms. Gray are gonna be working on those, uh, postcards and the, uh, the flyers that we're gonna be passing out, making sure they're in both English and Spanish. You know, a couple of other little things, but we're having another meeting. I guess it's the 22nd. I guess it's the twenty-second of July where we're going to finalize everything that we're doing. And, you know, I was talking to the mayor earlier this morning and I was saying, we're going to need a little help. We need a few extra hands, you know, packing, uh, hot dog in a bun, putting the bun in a, uh, you know, uh, a little package and putting it in the cooler. So if we have, I think we agreed on about six hundred hot dogs. Can you imagine? Uh, you know, we're going to need a few hands to help do that and then take it out to the truck. So I asked if we could have four, could identify four individuals, two to help with the grilled hot dogs and two to help with those that were boiled. And if we can do that, we'll be fine. We'll have a whole bunch of waters that we're passing out. We're giving out some trinkets, um, in bags to the little people or the parents, whomever comes up to the, uh, you know, the, the truck that has the, the goods we're passing out. So tentatively, that is, uh, what we're doing moving forward. Everything is, uh, you know, falling into place. Um, Ms., uh, uh, Hillary, I haven't forgotten about you. I know you're going to help out with the, uh, packing of all of the trinkets. So we, we have boxes and boxes of trinkets and we just want to decide which things we're going to put in the plastic bags and I'll, you know, kind of give you a, a snapshot of that in writing and then you can use those summer folks to help us, you know, work that out. So.
Okay.
Okay. And, uh, Mayor, I think that's all right now. As we move forward, there'll be other things that we'll have to, uh, other minor things that we'll have to address, but those are the, some of the key uh, items I just wanted to share with the group.
Any, any comments or questions for Chief?
Hey, I still think we need seven hundred and fifty.
Hey, look, stop it. You're just starting trouble. I don't know why, but you're starting trouble.
Center of blood. I, I do, um, have a request though. Um, when we send out the information about it, about the, um, caravan and, and National Night Out, can, can we put some writing in there in fine print, but not really fine print, in bold print? That just lets them know that, um, the, the sirens will be going, there will be music. Um, because some people get really angry and they approach inappropriately either drunk. We've had, um, a couple of drunk people. Well, someone drunk approached us. We have someone that, um, complains, um, generally about, um, um, we have a few people that are consistent in complaining about the noise. So if we could just let them know nicely that there will be noise and this is the timeframe. And this is, you know, this is why, and you know what I mean? Just somewhere in fine print or bold fine print stating that nicely.
I can do that. That's not a problem at all. Um, and you just mentioned something else I had not shared. The time for the event is five thirty to eight thirty PM, Tuesday, August the third, twenty twenty-one. Okay, Mayor, we can do that.
Thank you.
Keith, my question was going to be about the time. Um, will the music be, I mean, how long do you think it's going to take to through the town for the?
Uh, you, how long in time will it take for us to move through the town?
Right, right. Cause I'm just wondering if, you know, people are trying to put their kids to bed at seven thirty and then at eight thirty, something rolls through.
Well.
That's fine. It's going to be good.
We also slightly go, we did the same thing. We had the music playing and we moved throughout the city. I don't know if anyone raised the issue, but I'm saying, um, we'll be stopping as individuals or groups approach the caravan. So we use five thirty to eight thirty as a, you know, a kind of a barometer, but it could be shorter. It certainly won't be longer. Um, and we'll probably spend most of the time in, um, Fountain Park because a lot of folks will start to gather as we, you know, start passing out, uh, food and drinks and chips and stuff. So, um, to answer your question, I would say, you know, around eight o'clock or so, we should be finished. We should, we're not going to be out there much longer.
Okay. Um, and then my other question was if there's, like, usually there's a theme for National Night Out. Is there one this year?
You say a theme?
Yeah. Like there's been like a, you know, I know one year we had like a huge like crashed vehicle and it was about like drunk driving and.
Oh, well, we had not really, uh, thought about this time simply because we're still in this pandemic. Whereas if we were having it at the rec center, we might have a, you know, a car that was involved in a, a DUI where someone died and, you know, it sets the tone for, you know, um, you know, not driving while drunk and all those other kinds of things. But if there is something, I'll think about this.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that we need one. I actually think sort of being like officer friendly and walking through all of our neighborhoods is a great.
Right. You know, I was thinking about maybe, uh, Mr. Johnson would dress up as the, uh, uh, what's the, uh, the canine that goes.
The gruff?
Yeah.
Would you think you'd be interested in that? I know it's hot.
I don't think he's on right now.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that's, but okay.
I, I would say if maybe he could ride on the back of one of the vehicles and get out here and there.
Yeah.
But with the, the heat and everything else, it might be, uh, in the costume, it might be a little warm for him.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if we want to put Mr. Johnson in a.
I hear everybody speaking. I hear everybody speaking for Mr. Johnson. But okay, um, to your, uh, point, Ms. Turberville, I will think about something that we can do sort of in addition to just the, the theme for National Night Out is coming together as a community.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't suggesting we needed a theme. I just, if there was going to be one, I sort of wanted to. A heads up.
I just plan on be kind.
Right. Okay.
That I like.
I mean, it's supposed to be like a law enforcement community.
Yes. That's why we're going to have all the policemen out in uniform, all the police cars out in force, moving through. We'll have more police officers and police cars than we've had in a long time. Cause everyone will be out. So it should be, uh, should be interesting. Uh, Mayor, while we're on this subject, uh, you know, we like to document these, uh, events. Do we have someone or have we identified someone for the city who can do video as well as steal photos of the events?
Um, I believe Harlem will have his, um, videographer, but, um, I believe that also it's, it's, um, yeah, Harlem probably will, or I can speak with, um, well, Still Beach, they, um, I don't know if Lindsay, will Lindsay be gone? Lindsay will be gone, right? She leaves in August.
Uh, she'll be around there, but I don't know of, of her availability that day. I could check, uh, if she's available that day to see.
Okay.
It should be, Sue's still being in town.
Oh, okay.
So I'll check and see, uh, what she has, if she's available.
All right, cool. But last, I think, um, at our last event, we had a videographer and I could just check and see it. He's going to ride on the back of the truck now.
Okay. Who's driving that little death trap? I mean, that little car?
The Gem?
That's.
Talk about the Gem. The Gem is, is, is golden. I don't know. We, we figured that out. It, it, it generally, it's usually a council person somewhere around that Gem with not, um, Mr. Barnes.
My feet will be walking.
But more than likely, yeah. Okay. But, uh, I think last.
Dangerous place to be, Betsy.
To be in the suicide mobile or next to it.
Suicide mobile, huh? That's terrible.
Well, one time it was.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Time is moving on. So, um, I want to, if there is nothing else for the, um, work session, I want to adjourn the works. I want to go into a closed session. And, um, actually I want to adjourn this work session, go into the closed session. And then, uh, maybe we'll have five, ten minutes prior to our regular meeting to, um, take a quick break and come back. Because it's not a long, um, closed session, but it may, you know how we get sometimes, Sarah. I mean, I'm sorry. Uh, no. I'm sorry.
But you're not.
So if, if, if all are in favor in, uh, uh, closing the work session and going into the closed session, um, please indicate by saying aye. And going back to the work session, yeah.